Welcome everyone, we'll get underway. We're at Ate. Welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council, extraordinary meeting. We now have a quorum. There are apologies from councillors Hawkins, Pete, Calvert, Loon and Rick Tavish. I'll move that those apologies be accepted, second to councillor Stig and Wiley. I'll move those apologies be accepted, second to councillor Staines. I'll put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. I'll move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed, second to councillor Staines. The discussion, councillor Van Der Sis.
Do we need to stand today?
Yes.
I'm concerned that option two in the agenda paper actually isn't an option.
Well, that's nothing to do with the agenda that you discussed.
Well, the fact that it's in the agenda is something I'd like to...
No, it's in the item, the report, so we're just confirming the agenda, we'll get to that. Is there any other discussion about the actual agenda? Or I'll put it all, confirm the agenda, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. Number three, declaration of interest is for noting. And number four is the substantive and only issue on the agenda, which is the Saddle Hill Quarry Report. Can I invite Mr Worthington up?
You can discuss. Simon, what's number?
Can I kick this off by inviting you, either of you, which it is more appropriate, to just give us the context for what we are doing here today, the decision that we need to make today, which is encapsulated in the recommendations. But there is so much background to this that it would be easy for us to get involved in a lot of issues that are not pertinent to this meeting and the decision we have to make. So can I invite either of you to contextualise it and then any other introductory remarks you'd like to make and then we'll open up for questions.
I'll alter that, Simon hasn't been involved for too long. So I've got here as a very brief summary of, I guess, the process that the court has considered over the years. So essentially, we've been engaged in the process spanning around four years and it's really been a legal process, trying to determine what is required out in terms of the quarry. And we've considered it timely to break the council on the stage we're at and the process that we're following. The High Court was in the last year, quashed the Environment Court's suit and decided that a resource consent does, and the balance of power abilities exist. The High Court sees the next task for the parties to set consensus on the conditions that may have applied at the time resource consent was granted. And the Environment Court, after the High Court decision issued a minute, are asking that we report back by the 20th of February on progress on the question of the conditions. And since then, we've been trying to work on what the conditions should be. And in late 2014, moving on through the process, there was a request to modify an interim enforcement order which is in place on the upper quarry, which essentially constrains the quarry within what is the skyline, so they couldn't work outside of that. They made a request to go outside of that on a temporary basis and they got that late in December. So the court presents three recommendations for the council to consider. Our response to the court on the 20th of February, progressing with the question of the conditions. The question of retaining the interim enforcement order until the conditions are resolved. And the question of a temporary modification of the interim enforcement order without borrowing outside of the area which the court has protected.
Okay. Okay, the comments, so I'll open it up. Councillors for questions, questions councillors, councillor Van Der Sis.
A text message received by at least several of us says, "An important email has been just sent with information regarding today's extraordinary meeting at 1pm. Kind regards, Phil on behalf of Saddle View Estates." Unfortunately, there is no internet connection available for me currently at the moment. I'm wondering if anyone else has received the email and if it's possible for us to see the email.
No, can I, I'll rule on that. I have, I've just checked, I had heard, I didn't receive the text message, I heard that there was an email on its way, but I would not accept it as any part of this meeting in any case, so it's irrelevant whether anyone of us has got it or not. It is ridiculously and I would suggest mischievously late for anyone to send anything like that. The parties of Saddle Hill Estates were invited to provide any information for this meeting that they wish to, in plenty of time. I understand they've done some of that, so whatever it is, whether it arrives or not, I will not be allowing it to be considered. Councillor Thompson.
Sorry, I had some more questions, but I'm happy to wait till... Just for clarification, just, I totally accept your ruling, but I have received it and all I can say is that it's got nothing to do with today's decision, it's simply a copy of an Official Information Act request for the council's costs to date in this process, so it's not germane to this decision.
Thank you. Councillor Van Der Sis, share some more questions.
Yes, on 4.7, option two says, "Take a position that differs from staff and legal advisers." My understanding is that when we're to be given recommendations with options, that we're to have more than one option. And option one certainly is an option. It basically says what it does at the bottom of 4.6. Option two, however, I don't believe is an option at all. I'm concerned, as with the previous meeting, that we were basically just given one option with no opportunity to choose another. This option two here is any number of options, almost an invitation to whistle Dixie and differ from staff and legal advisers. And I'm wondering if it's possible for us to actually have a proper option two that isn't actually any number of options.
Well, I'm not sure that that's a question, but insofar as an option is given and the choice for the council, I take it, is to accept it or not, then there are automatically two options. And I imagine, although I defer to Mr Pickford, option two is, if you don't accept option one, then what is your suggestion? But Mr Pickford, would you like to call your own?
Yeah, through the, through the chair, that's essentially what we've come down to, it's very difficult for us to put in this report together to come up with any other option other than take an alternative position, but it's difficult for us to actually articulate what those positions might be because there's a myriad of them. But the recommendation from the staff and the recommendation from our legal advisers is that we basically go with option one, which are those three options, which are three recommendations on the first two pages of the report.
I agree with you, Your Worship, that if you just have the one option, we automatically have two options and that is that we can just not accept that option. However, I don't believe that that is what we are supposed to be supplied with. My understanding is that we're supposed to be supplied with more than one option, not just the one option and then the automatic, let's not go there. In this case, disguise as option number two. So I'm wondering, is there anything that could be done to ensure that we actually do have at least one genuine other option? Because to come here and have to vote on one option only is problematic, I think.
Well, it may be problematic for you, but I disagree with your assertion that we have to have a specific option. Mr Pickford has pointed out that there are any number of theoretical possibilities and to expect staff to have a look down there would be a bit much, so I'm ruling that I'm not agreeing with you. We don't need another option and we will consider the report as it stands.
So just to clarify, Your Worship, you're saying that you have ruled that it's quite appropriate for us to have an agenda item that only has one option?
No, I didn't say that. I said, the report as it stands is quite appropriate, the options given are appropriate and that's what we'll reconsider. Are there any further questions? Councillor Hall? Sorry, councillor Verzek, then councillor Hall, sorry.
Just following up on councillor Van Der Sis' query, I thought the other option was that we don't agree with the first option, so that's two options anyway.
That's fine.
But that's beside the point. What I'm asking is, Mr Worthington, Ellen, in the report somewhere I noted that the owners of the quarry were offering to backfill or infill the quarry to its original shape. Were they going to do that at their expense?
Yes, that's the, our understanding, that they were going to basically half the hill on the seaward side that would work away on the quarry, maintaining the ridgeline profile, and then it would be backfilled at their expense and then they would start on the morshill side and again fill and their assurance to us that it would be done so that whenever the quarrying was finished, there would be effectively no difference in the view that you get now and it would be, the profile would be protected, essentially that's my understanding.
Yes, and it's detailed on the website.
Sorry, what was that?
The process is detailed on the website, they have some graphics showing what they, you know, plan for the hill.
Just, bow our edition, this would take some decades, so it's a long process. It was first raised with us just prior to Christmas, as this was their plan, this was what they would like to do. And the discussion very briefly was that that would require a whole secret set of consenting processes because that certainly would not have been envisaged in the 1960 resource consent. It was subsequently raised in the meeting with Simon and Ellen in trying to determine whether we could come to an agreement about the extent of the existing quarrying rights. And they mentioned, simply they mentioned in passing and said they would be open to exploring a joint venture with the city council, but there's been no further follow-up since that.
Can I just pick up on that? Because I think this is an important question for our understanding of what our choices are. Can you confirm for me that the directive given to us by the court was that we seek to find agreement or consensus with Saddle Hill Estates on what the conditions of the missing resource consent would be if we could? And that being the case, since this proposal to backfill could not have been and would not have been envisaged as one of those conditions, that it is outside the range of what we were directed to consider?
Through the chair, you have that that's correct, Your Worship. It's when the, in looking at the other consents at the time, and we've tried to source as many relevant consents for similar activities issued around the same time, I think that's correct, that we would never, when the consent was granted, it would never have been envisaged that the scope of this work that is now proposed would have happened without a formal notification process. And that's essentially where we've arrived at, that we don't believe that the rights that quarry owners believe they have actually exist. And that's why we really, we would like the court to rule on that and what the conditions of the consent would be.
And it wasn't really any formal direction from Justice Fattah. In paragraph 137, which is in the report, he said, "It seems to me that the next task for the parties is to seek, is to reach consensus on the proper scope of activity, having regard to the full legal and factual matrix as at the time of the grant." So that's all we're trying to explore.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
A couple of questions, I just want to read out a piece out of a paper in September 2008. If it had existing use rights, would the need to be examined to see what they allow and how much quarrying could be undertaken, Mr Worthington said? Investigating historical records is not a five-minute job. And if the quarry was established before the first district plan in 1950, it would be even more difficult to trace. There was an article on the OTT. And I see in this paperwork here, the court says that, okay, they're happy that the consent was granted in 1960, but Mamona Airport was started to get built in 1959, a year beforehand. And this is an article from Nada Love in their history. "Nada Love Construction began work in 1959 on National Airways Corporation terminal building in the control tower, Wadalmas built the tane." That was a year before the court says this consent dated 1960. Then, the other question is, when you were looking through consents and come to the Mount Cargill consent, which is actually right outside what we should be doing, it was actually Mount Cutton, they actually quarrying, not Mount Kettle. And the consent for was, the Mount Cutton was for quarrying the north-eastern side of the hill, they are quarrying the western side of the hill. And did you, when you were looking up for consents, look for the consent for Fortification Hill on George King Memorial Drive?
Few questions there, some good questions.
Yeah, and there's one other one, there's another one in Dowdies Quarry on the Lee Stream Road. Did you get a consent, did you look for the consent for that? Because they were in the Tyree County, the same as Saddle Hill was, where these other ones are in the Whakawake County that you're referring to.
Okay, I'll work backwards.
Yeah.
We have been looking through the records to try and find all the consents that we'd be aware of and we've got, I think it's just over 30. And those two particular ones, I'm not, I'm not sure that go to one and the other one. The Mount Cutton one, yes, that's a good point, the, it is on the side of Mount Cutton, the documents from 1957 refer to Mount Cargill, so for, I guess, confusion with the documents, I've referred to Mount Cargill. And then, that consent has actually, it's been included into the district plan as a scheduled permitted activity.
As Mount Kettle, yeah.
It refers to Mount Kettle, comma, Mount Cargill, but it's on the side of Mount Cutton. And when I, I look at the 1957 plan for the quarry and you compare it on the side of the aerial photo of today, they align pretty well, it's pretty obvious that Mount Cutton one is in fact the 1957 consent.
Oh yeah, it all stacks up, yeah.
Yes. And, I'm not, I can't remember exactly what the existing use right question was.
No, all I'm saying is, you referred to, to Mount Kettle or Mount Cargill and Ramrock Quarry, which were in the Whakawake County at the time of consent. Where these other two, the law referred to...
Fortification.
And Dowdies, they were both in the Tyree County at this point in 1960.
Yeah.
Is there any contention?
I can't answer that right now, but I can check in terms of what we've identified.
They would be more relevant in terms of them in the Tyree County than the other one being in the Whakawake County.
Possibly to, possibly, but an important point is that the regional planning authority at the time crossed all those boundaries of all those multiple councils and there was that letter in 1957 from Mr Edwards about the proposal for quarrying Mount Cargill, Cutton. And there was also that letter in 1965 from Mr Edwards about the consent that was granted for Saddle Hill in 1960. So there was a wider range of consideration besides just the particular council at the time.
Yeah, I just, it'd be interesting to see what the conditions were put on, fortification and...
Yes, it would be and I'm applying the details, I'm going to record and you're welcome, you know, have it on, pass on.
Councillor Benson-Park? Councillor Van Der Sis, share another question?
Yes, a few of them actually. When Chief Executive Bidrow says that the proposal to rebuild the hill with fill could take decades, I'm wondering, perhaps Mr Worthington could answer, is it credibly possible to build a new mountain with clean fill imported to the site? And where would this massive amount of fill come from?
Point of order. Point of order.
Mr Chair? It's a good example, we already ruled on the narrow focus of this debate. We've heard twice from yourself and from the planners that this is actually not germane, this is irrelevant, would require a separate consent application, so it's clearly out of order in terms of the matters under discussion.
Yeah, I will uphold the point of order, but more, as much as, the more relevant issue I think is that it would be unreasonable to expect the staff to have an answer to a question about a proposal that they didn't make at Saddle Hill. So I'm upholding the point of order, can you come back to questions on the issues that we're confronting? The proposal to rebuild the hill is not germane to this conversation.
Sorry, the proposal to rebuild the hill, I thought, was fundamental to what they were offering and...
I've avoided, okay, allow me to explain it again. The directive or the request from the court was for the council and the quarry operators to get together to find some consensus on what the resource consent conditions would be, assuming there was a resource consent, and the court's rule there probably was, what that would probably have been at that point. We have established that rebuilding the hill could not possibly have been one of those conditions, therefore, the proposal is post facto, the, both the resource consent and the discussion around establishing what those conditions would be. So it can't be germane to this conversation. It doesn't mean that at some point we won't get to that, but what we're trying to establish today is what to do going forward on the basis of the task that was given to us, to the council and Saddle Hill Estates from the court. And the proposal to rebuild the hill is not part of that and can't.
Okay. There is a lot of discussion of it however, for instance, on 4.5, the hilltop then be filled back to restore its 1942 profile etc. I've got quite a lot of red lines around all of this, you're saying that despite it being in the report, I'm not allowed to ask questions about it or talk to it.
It's not germane to the conversation, but I have further indicated that I don't think it's reasonable to expect staff to be, they've put this in the report for our information, but they can't be expected to answer questions on it because it's not their proposal. It's the Saddle Hill, so I've ruled, so no wrong there. Have you got another question?
Yes, I have, but I'd like to reassess my other questions at this time.
Councillor Hall?
I prefer it when we're more relaxed and didn't have to stand up. I can't see my notes when I'm standing up, but Ellen...
Is your stomach in the road? Is it? Is your stomach in the road?
No, it's not actually. Hey, Ellen, I've got a couple of questions. One was on page 422, 423, there was a minutes of the Saddle Hill Community Board, Ellen, 2nd of May 1996. And at that point, the company secretary, sorry, I suppose it's the GSO, but the committee secretary, Graeme Henderson, had replied and the comment was on 423.14, the committee secretary advised that he had discussed the matter with staff and the city planner had advised that the quarry operation was in compliance with the resource consent. Yeah, can I just ask a question? The question is, did a consent exist in 1996 or was he just shooting from the hip? Do you know what I mean? Like, was there a consent that existed in 1996 that is no longer available or...
There is, some of the records say that a consent existed, so they may have looked at a document that said it existed because there's a variety that said that, but there's a copy of the resource consent. So yes, I can understand why someone said that, it's not...
But they wouldn't have said it if they hadn't seen a consent?
They would have, they would have, it's hard to put myself in their position, but they probably said it because they'd seen a document which said, yes, there is a resource consent. They never, they never saw the resource consent, they were seeing someone else saying, yes, there is one.
Now, also noting councillor Hall's comments about the fact that these were the Ramrock and Strattori examples that you've used that did have consents, is it a possibility that if the Silver Peaks County Council of the Day had, or Tari had issued a consent, is it a possibility? Like, I was quite surprised to see those conditions in those consents, I didn't realise back in those days there was consents like that. So is it quite on the balance and it's subject, it could be either way. I realise it's only your opinion, but is it a possibility that Tari in those days could have issued consents, A, with no conditions and just said, yep, go for your life? Or is it on the balance less likely and that there would have been conditions or you simply couldn't say?
On the balance of power abilities, I would say that they would have issued a consent with conditions, having looked at other consents around that time, acknowledging it's in a different council, but they were all subject to the same plan or...
Yeah. So what councillor Hall was asking about particular quarries, Fortification and the Dowdies Quarry, there will be other quarries through that time, could you get us some of that information to see what examples of consents were at that time?
If we can identify, find a set for a particular quarry, then yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Verzek?
Well, I was just going to move the resolution, but I do have a question.
Surely.
With regards to number three.
Well, I'll take it, and I'll note that you're ready to move and there's another couple of questions to come and then I'll...
The council supports a temporary modification of the interim enforcement, noting that it has no more than a minor adverse effect on the skyline. Have you not been able to come to that conclusion as yet? I mean, what, why can we not be more definitive about that and just say that we don't enforce the or support any further modification?
Our preference, this was Chris's when that request came in, was that it should be bundled up with the process of determining what the actual consent conditions were. And so we didn't want to move that boundary line identified in that interim enforcement order. We had a look early this year, we've gone back recently and further considered it and our landscape architect has formed an opinion on what change could occur and be deemed to be a minor effect. And we haven't further discussed that with the quarry owners.
Okay, it's just that if we do allow more work to be done there, then certainly residents or ratepayers are going to be unhappy about that, but at the same time, we want to be fair to the quarry owners, so obviously there is some doubt there, but it's, I would have thought you'd be able to come back with something more definitive than just this ambiguous recommendation of number three. I'm quite happy to support number three if you still think you've got some more work on it, but I would have thought you ought to be able to come back with something more definitive.
After writing the report, that's when we did our second visit and did some more evaluation, so I've formed up an opinion on how much change could occur outside of the protected area and still have the profile of the hill largely unchanged and be deemed no more than minor and within the scope of what the consent could be. And then that might be, might have been our, towards a final position, but the quarry owners have a different opinion on that, but it's for them to...
Well, I'm quite, I'll come back to you. Can I follow up on the councillor's question though and ask you if the area that you've identified as being able to be, the extra area you've identified as being able to be quarried or whatever, without more than minor effects, does it correlate with the whole area that the quarry operators are in?
That hatched area on page 4.9, the red hatched area, yes, it pretty much would and... and I could expand it. We would expand it, but...
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
My question's around the same area. My question is, why do we want to agree to this? What's... Is this about maintaining a relationship? Is this about hoping that they might demonstrate some reciprocal goodwill? What's the reason? It's been defined, the court said, here's your no-go area until we resolve all this. Why do we want to let that go when we have not been able to resolve it?
Um, it's... Yeah. When I transposed that drawing onto a profile, which we took a photo looking from the north side, side onto the quarry, and putting the red hatched area onto that side-on view, there really wasn't much change to that profile. So we further explored that and thought, yes, you could do a little bit more and maintain that profile and have no more than a minor effect. But that's looking at probably what our bottom line would be in terms of this is what the consent could possibly allow. And it is maybe a means to help complete the process, but it also is probably where we would end up if we have the conditions to the environment court saying, this is what we believe the conditions are, should be, as a way to put itself in the context of 1960.
So could I ask, to date, has there been any concession made by the quarry owners to the community concern that has not been enforced as a result of court action?
Um, yes, they have complied with interim enforcement order, and their opinion on what the resource consent allows for is definitely different than ours. And if you went on mine, you would have seen their proposal, and I briefly explained here in terms of what it is, cut it top off in two halves, so you might say that's not a concession.
So I'm still not sure that I've heard an answer to my question. Has there been any concession that you're aware of that the quarry owners have made voluntarily, bearing in mind the community concern, that has not been a concession, that has been forced upon them as a result of a legal ruling?
I'm not aware of a concession in that time. I don't... I'm not sure that you could actually say there was a need to make one in terms of the quarrying they were lawfully allowed to do while the interim enforcement order was in place.
I guess Counselor Thompson is asking, yes, no question, and it would be helpful if we...
If you... I'd say no, thank you.
May I just say, though, I mean, one of the reasons this is before you, as they have asked for this, when we originally sought a declaration of the extent of the existing use rights and the belief that neither party was going to be able to produce a resource consent, that was quite a period of time ago, and our expectation was that that would be dealt with reasonably expeditiously by the court. And it has not been, which means that the period of time that the quarry owners have been constricted to operating within that ridgeline has been considerably longer than either they or we imagined, to the point where the existing quarrying ability of Saddle Hill's state is almost exhausted. They are becoming fairly seriously limited in their ability to quarry. So the problem that we have is not knowing the original resource consent conditions. It's impossible for us to say whether this change is a change that's more than minor from the original conditions, because we have no way of knowing the original conditions, and nor can we and the quarry owners agree on what they might have been, where in fact poles apart.
So just for my own peace of mind, putting aside the fact that the courts made it somewhat with a slightly glacial speed, making courage to go as slowly as possible by the fees that accrue as a result of that. But putting that aside, the... We have been charged by the court with attempting to come to agreement about what would be a reasonable set of conditions, taking into account what might have been the case at the time. And I assume that there have been meetings with them, and I assume, have they at any point stated what they believe those conditions would or ought to be?
What they've stated is this idea of cutting a 90-degree wedge out of the hill, quarrying that away, rebuilding it out of fill. They think that would be a reasonable condition, although all parties are comfortable that that would not have been the condition in 1960.
So would you... Do you have any sense that any reasonable attempt has been made to meet the wishes of the court? As opposed to us having to go back to the court and incur further costs? Do you have any sense that a reasonable approach has been taken?
I think our sense is that we are unable to reach an agreed position, but probably both parties already thought that, which is why we went to court in the first place. So we originally went to court because we were unable to agree on the extent of the quarrying rights, and therefore, we were unable to agree on the value of the hill, should the council decide that it was to purchase the hill.
So my final question is, why would we voluntarily hand over the only negotiating position we have with a company that's demonstrated little appetite to negotiate a solution that bears in mind the community's concerns with regard to this?
I'll assume that's a rhetorical question.
No, it's not. No, no, sorry, I'll rephrase it then. If I'm really seeking your view as to whether there is a reason that I can't think of, that you would want to give them this further ability to continue trading without any attempt to resolve the situation?
The comment I would make is that we think we agree on balance the properties of resource consent exists. So what we were trying to do, I think, in this recommendation was to give, show a gesture that we don't believe that there should be no quarry whatsoever, and they have no rights whatsoever, that it's offering something to them in order to continue to operate, so long as that the effects were deemed to be no more than minor. Would you agree, Alan?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Bishop. I don't understand how option resolutions two and three are read together. In my mind, they should be or. Am I misreading that completely? Because I can't understand how we'd confirm one and then say we'll modify it, then we aren't confirming one. Recommendations two and three?
Yes.
Question is, can they be read together? Because I don't think they can be.
You could read it. If you write it as an or, so you either keep it, and if that's the decision, then it's...
So, Counselor, when I... When you come to put this, I will frame the decision-making so that there's a choice, if that's what logically leads to.
I was looking forward to Counselor Mizik saying which one perhaps is...
Well, what I was going to suggest is that we just take each resolution individually. That's the easiest way.
But with the knowledge that one is the opposite of the other.
Thank you, Bishop. I just wanted that clarified. It's a broad thing, what is minor? And my issue here is exploring in whose mind something is minor, when we've had very clear indication from a substantial group and community board, two community boards telling us that they believe that this has become more than minor. And I'm just wondering, in your mind, if you just give planners' talk, is your view on that compared to the community's? Because it is really important that we're conveying that to the community and how they feel about it, because they certainly don't think it's minor, from what I'm hearing. Can you explain how you have come to that point of view?
I guess I explained it earlier on in terms of our analysis of the hill using the photos and the hatched area by the quarry owners. And we're looking at the level of change that would occur to the profile of the hill. As it stands today, it came to a conclusion in the landscape architect's perspective that it's a minor, a minor change.
From which point, though, this is where I think it's difficult to understand, appreciating that if I looked at Moskew in 1960, it's a different place from what it is in 2015, yet I don't think any resource consent was necessarily considering that Moskew would have to stay the same size in order to have that protection afforded to it, if there was something protecting the view. And so if I look at the resource consent that you refer to for in one of your imperatives on page... Now I can't find it. 4.8. E on Mount Karko, or whichever mountain you want to call it, at the cessation... This is number E. At the cessation of operations, all plant machinery and buildings shall be removed, and all reasonable steps taken to ensure that the minimum disfigurement to the countryside is left after borrowing operations cease. It's not tagged to any area being that view or that disfigurement, is it?
Yes, there is. On the 1957 plan, they show the quarry and they say how many chains away it is from the boundary, so it was a defined area at the time.
So the areas defined, but where the disfigurement is seen from?
Northern Matoa and Portobello Road.
So are we thinking the similar reference points are at for this, for Saddle Hill?
That is possible, yes.
Because my problem is, it depends where you're standing, where the disfigurement is, and where you're getting your minor effect from.
And that is a good point you're making, and the statute of promitivity rule in the plan specifically refers to the view from Mount Karko Road and Portobello Road, so that is acknowledging that the change to the landscape from a specific perspective.
So when you're taking it on this case, and I'm just trying to work out where the minor effect is coming from, because in certain areas, it's considered a major effect by some people, not obviously you. So when you're taking your point of view here, is it just on a close-up photo like this that we've got on 4.9? Or are you going out to, say, 87 and...
We viewed it from a distance as well. We actually went into Moskew on the back of the road, and we were looking back up the hill. So the further you go away, the less noticeable the change would be to the point, which would be barely perceptible. I can't see it awful little much.
Halfway there, if you can. But what about to, at different times of day and night? Because, I mean, you don't see much of it at night, but there are some lights that you will see it quite differently in.
Yes, and that's certainly correct, that your perception of the quarry does change depending on the time of day, the shadows, and how weather the materials...
Have you taken that into account when you've done your assessment?
Our primary focus was looking at the ridgeline, and what we were looking at was... We were looking at the left-hand side, the east side, when you're looking to the south, and you have a sort of a mirror image of the curve that would be there. And if you applied that curve, then a little bit of the hill could be removed towards the bottom, not definitely not the top. And that was seen as a minor change from what we have. And it is quite complicated, because trying to imagine what it would have been in 1960, what the thinking would be in terms of effects. And then when I looked at the picture, I could see that the level of change that could occur, we can't agree on this, the absolute maximum scope of the ridgeline change. I'm just thinking what the judge would think of that, and our landscape architect's provided opinion on that. And it is, the public's perspective and the professionals' perspective, they don't always marry up, but the judgment has to consider the professionals' perspective.
Thanks for that, Alan. Look, the last point is, this isn't only about the visuals, it's about the risks that come from doing this extra work, and understanding that in recommending, as you have to an extent, that hatch theory being included, what seismic or geological information have you got supporting that the area wouldn't necessarily be subject to caving in or something or slip because of this? Because to my mind, this recommendation is... I would feel slightly more comfortable if it had a condition, both risk, looking at the risk, but also ensuring that the site was suitable for that sort of work right to those boundaries, because I can't see it, I don't know that we've got it. And if we're going to exacerbate a problem, then I don't want to necessarily do that without having that geological... It's not a cost that we should be bearing, it should be a cost borne by the operator if we were to provide for this, but it's not there in the recommendations. And how would we include that?
I don't have the geological information, but the conditions would have to reflect that concern, and the benching that occurs in the quarry would be the primary mechanism for protecting the ridgeline, like the benching that currently exists. But that said, it's not a... Hard to say that's an absolute certainty that there wouldn't be any sort of erosion along of that ridgeline, just through natural processes, so...
You're...
And then that's all at the bottom, and we're not talking about the high parts of the slope, it's very much the lower bit.
On the basis of what you're... You're giving me some confidence, now you're taking that confidence away from me, so I'm just... My concern is, if you're looking at the mirror, and I understand what you mean, I think, by the mirror of the shake, that had there been some slumping, or if there were to be some, to mirror, that may be advantageous to the applicant in some ways, because we're not going to exactly make them... Or have we got any mechanisms to make them build up the hill again if it did slump?
The goal is to protect the ridgeline, and that's what the interim enforcement order does, and that means to... There needs to be need by the quarry owner to take care to not undermine that ridgeline, and that means it's a benching, it's a primary mechanism, you can only get so close before you run that risk, and there is consequences if you push it too far.
What are the consequences? And who bears that risk?
Well, if some action is to be taken, it's either the council could take, enforce an action, and the public itself could choose to do it as an individual, but logically fall towards the council to look at that issue. It is a breach of a resource consent condition.
And what action could we require? Could we make them... Could we require the quarry owners to reconstitute the hill in order to preserve that view realistically, in your mind?
It would all depend on the scale of the damage. I just can't parse that with the certainty.
At one moment, you're saying that we can build, what appears to me, right to the edge of the risk area, or not build it, take out quarry, right to the edge of the potential risk area, and on the other hand, not have much comfort that we could reinstate that visual if it got to that point?
What I mentioned earlier, that we're allowed to expand beyond the protected area, the currently protected area, is that we'd be replicating the current practice applied to the quarry that's being worked now, and that has to be a process which does not undermine the ridgeline and then breach the judge's interim enforcement order. So it's applying existing practices to a bit of a new area within the quarry place.
Okay, Counselor Starks.
Thank you, Bishop. Again, I'm sort of looking at this proposal to extend it, so in looking at the diagram, it's a bit hard to tell, is this actually cutting beyond the edge cut of the current quarry? So I can see part of this appears to be a quarried face, but this also, by the look of a tree... But also by the look of the tree that appears in there, that this proposal would see virgin, if you like, virgin land, cut. And how much proportion of this is actually virgin hill that's being cut?
There would be some unquarried areas. When you, you can see there's a color difference below that bulge and the red hatching. And that's overburdened, so it's changed the color of the ground. So that's not been worked as such, it's not having dug, but stuff's been pushed over in the past, quite some time ago. So yes, it would expand some of the unworked quarry area.
If we approved this to a neighbour, to go out and quarrying, to go out to that profile line, would that automatically then transfer into whatever conditions on the consent the court applied? In other words, if we agree to this, does that mean that the court is unlikely and probably can't do anything other than to include that then? Whether they were going to or not, if we've given it up, would that enable the court then to say, well, it is, it's given up?
They would, I would imagine, conclude that it is part of, well, we will be concluding that it is part of the resource consent area if we agree to extend into that hatch area.
So once, if we make that agreement today, we've effectively given it up?
It will become part of a consent, yes. In our minds, the applicant's different opinion and the judge might have a different opinion then.
So in terms, putting the ridgeline to one side, and I understand this is all about preserving the ridgeline, but the other thing that Moskell looks out on is instead of looking out on a hill, they look out on a quarry. So how much more, how visible, disregarding the ridgeline, how visible is this additional cut going to be from Moskell? In terms of increasing the size of the quarry as it's visible now?
There wouldn't be much change.
So Moskell doesn't, Moskell doesn't see this, like when I stand in Moskell, I can see the quarry. So I won't see a change in the edge line of the quarry.
You would possibly, probably perceive some small change.
So, because on this photo, it looks like quite a big change.
Yes, it's in part angles. If I put on the screen, I might be able to just kind of interpret that point.
Just one other question, it'd be good to see that. In terms of what councillor Wilson was talking about, and this is if they quarry out to the profile line, then there is a significant event which causes the hill to collapse. So the profile line is breached. And that's determined to be as a result of them having not, not taken sufficient care to protect that line in the case of an event. Who is responsible? Is it the company or is it the individual? Because I could see if there was a major event, the easiest thing for them to do if it's the company is to go into bankruptcy, disappear, nobody does anything. Because the body that has the responsibility no longer has any financial means to do it. So is there a personal responsibility under the act? Or is this the company that's doing it that carries the responsibility?
I want to take prosecution on that, that we can go focus on the company and on the individual, if there's an individual involved. And the directors of a company are a person under the RMA, so they are liable for...
So they would be personally liable if they were found to have contributed?
Yes, they would probably take action against, they'd count, but I can't be if they're at fault. Proving that they were negligent, that's, in this kind of situation, does present some challenges to be fair.
Thank you.
Councillor Lord. It's probably a difficult one to ask you again, Ellen, but my question is really if we go with options one and options two. So two days from now, you turn up the court and say, look, we've had dickens of a job to get any sort of sense out of these people and they're not willing to meet us at all halfway. And then you say, we want the court to determine, what sort of timeframe are we talking that they might determine a set of conditions?
I'm not sure how long, maybe a legal advisor or a secretary would have some idea of how long it might be. But I think some indications it might be reasonably quick because the judge has been involved in this process. Councillor, can you give us some information?
Yes, I'm not sure about that because it's likely that the quarry owners will say that they don't want judge, that particular judge to deal with this issue. So there might be some toing and froing, trying to get another judge involved. So it could be, it could be some weeks for that process to sort itself out before a judge even, except the papers are fresh. But, and then it would depend if whoever the judge is that looks at this, if they want to satisfy themselves with more information or further inquiries. So it could, it could be relatively quick, but it could be an extended process that might go on for another year even.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Just happy to second councillor Bezette's recommendations.
I'd like to get on with them. I'll come to how we deal with that.
Councillor Thompson.
The, in the summary at the beginning, it says the, in addition, the owners of the quarry have made an application to cancel an interim enforcement order. That's a separate issue from the Environment Court meeting on the 20th of February, is it not?
Correct.
Yes. And if they were successful in cancelling the interim enforcement order, in the absence of any agreed resource consent conditions, they could presumably build up a lot.
They, there's no conditions in there, it is essentially unfettered.
So the only reason that you would, oh, sorry. Is there any other reason that you would seek to have the interim enforcement order removed other than to enable you to do what you want that you can think of?
No, no.
Councillor Hall, another question.
In the Mount Cargo consent, it says trees shall be planted and maintained for the purpose of screening. Have you had any discussion whatsoever about planting trees around the site to take away the visual?
No, no specific conversations about trees on the upper quarry. I suspect that'd be quite problematic and as a mechanism for mitigating the effects of the loss of the hill.
Well, yeah, I know that the Kilmore Quarry, part of their consent was the place had to be planted out in trees to obscure the quarry.
Vegetation would be used to help soften the impact of the quarry in the long term. I guess if you looked at the quarry up in North Road, that's an example of planting inside of it and how that softens up the landscape. And then there are also conditions to help shield the quarry entirely from view. And there's some examples around where that has been used. Or it depends on how the quarry sits in relation to the topography, if it's on a flat land, it's imminently achievable. And if it's on a slope, it becomes a whole lot more difficult to use vegetation to entide a mask of the best you could probably ever achieve is to soften it.
One question, I just have one final question. If council were of a mind to grant permission to relax the conditions at the moment and enable extra quarrying, would we not then be essentially saying, we haven't been able to reach any consensus on what the conditions are, but we believe this new piece is one of them? Isn't that rather a contradiction? We'd be actually setting in place a condition for the resource consent precisely when we say, at the same time as we're saying, we can't agree on what the conditions for the resource consent are. Wouldn't that constrain our credibility a little later on?
I'm not sure if it would constrain in the eyes of the court if we were saying, this is our... Before we took that step, we were satisfied, this is our absolute limit in terms of how much quarrying could occur. And if that was the absolute limit, then I don't think it would. We need to be satisfied that this is the limit, is that hatch area acceptable or not, in the eyes of the council?
Councillor Anderson, another question.
Mr Pickford said that he accepts that the resource consent exists. At what date did the DCC change its mind about whether the resource consent existed or not?
So in the ruling, coming out of November 2014, that was the judge's, I don't know the exact words, but it was on the balance probabilities that consent did exist.
So we basically accepted the court's ruling last year on that. But prior to that, we didn't believe that a resource consent existed.
That's correct. We went to the Environment Court seeking a declaration on existing rights and the resource consent. And the Environment Court determined that a resource consent did not exist. And the quarry owners appealed to the High Court. And the High Court has subsequently determined that one does exist with the answer probabilities.
And to echo the mayor's question, do you think that that also constrains our credibility?
No, the High Court judge has said, go away and have a discussion about conditions of consent. So I don't think it undermines our position, ours was in line with the Environment Court, if anything, yes.
Okay, it seems to me from the paperwork that we're adopting really a very legally driven position. And it's on legal advice that we've got these recommendations, is that your understanding as well?
It is, the whole thing's really about a legal planning question, what are you allowed to do legally?
Okay. Have you, in addition to the legal planning question, which this is mainly about, have you also considered the potential cost to the rate payer of more expensive gravel for any projects in the city if the quarry operation is restricted?
Look, I'm not going to allow that question because it's not a question of the planning department. That's not the questions they were charged with dealing with, so it's not a reasonable question to ask of them.
Okay, is it a legal question then, if we're not allowed to talk about those costs, to ask about the consideration?
Can I just clarify? I didn't say they weren't allowed to talk about those costs. I said it was inappropriate, given their expertise and what they were charged with doing, not that they weren't allowed to.
Okay.
That is a question I could address, Helia. I just remind you councillor, that the reason we are in court is following a council recommendation that we go to court to seek a declaration of the extent of the quarrying rights. So this isn't a planning department decision, it's not a legal decision, following an earlier discussion led by councillor, where they're all about whether the council wished to proceed with trying to purchase the hill. The council made a decision that instead of that, we would need to determine the value of the hill first. And in order to do that, we would need to determine the extent of the quarrying rights. That is the entire agreement, that is the entire reason that we are in court. And that is following a council resolution, not, nothing out of the planning department.
Okay. But this recommendation, or the option that we have in front of us and the recommendations that are here, my questions really are, does it just have this narrow legal focus? Or are we also looking at the cost to the rate payer if we keep fighting this legal battle, which has already been significant?
So it was a unanimous, a unanimous decision, or I can't say that, there was no councillor recorded as voting against the decision to go to court to seek a legal opinion. This decision to potentially to say, look, if the existing ridgeline quarry were the extent of their resource consent, which we don't know, then this change is one that is not more than minor. And that would be a decision that the planners would take today, is entirely a planning department. They're not allowed to make that decision on the basis of any financial issue for either the council or any other contractor.
So if I want to introduce some consideration of the financial impacts of these recommendations and decisions, and I'm told I don't have the opportunity to do it here, we're doing the opportunity to do that.
But I think you'll find that the consideration of the financial implications was done when council made overwhelmingly a decision to try and clarify the legal position. And that was the time when it was considered. And the conclusion the council came to was, in balance, we needed to know some facts about the resource consent and the conditions of it. And whether we kept fighting and whether we took into account the financial implications for rolling costs and what's that? I recall that was referred to, but that's the time to do it. What we're talking about now is where do we go now in terms of the process that council has already endorsed?
So we're not able to change the process that council has already endorsed? We're not allowed to bring up arguments that, let's call it quits and not throw any more money at this ongoing...
You can, you can raise it, you can raise it, but we've got a recommendation in front of us. We've got two councillors who are going to move and second it. If you want to bring up something after that and move it, and you have seen, then we can. But what's relevant to this, these recommendations which are in front of us, is what's in this report. So we've got two, that's questions. Now, we have a mover and a seconder, but I note that recommendations two and three conflict. So what I'm going to suggest is that the mover and seconder move one and two. And if two fails, they can move three. But they can't, you can't logically consistently move one, two and three. So are you, are you, mover and seconder having to move one and two and then move on if two fails? Okay, so it's been moved, councillor Bezette, second to councillor Benson-Pope. Recommendations one and two on the order paper. I'll open it up for discussion and councillor Bezette, I invite you to speak to it first.
Well, yeah, I mean, look, I don't think the council's got anywhere to go on this. It's quite a simple argument as far as I'm concerned. It is a legal planning issue and we've had what I think is the right advice. I agree in the way you're handling resolution three. It becomes redundant if you accept resolution two, so I'm quite happy with that. This has been around for a long time, this issue. It's been through the courts before, where we can't come to some agreement. So we're going back to Environment Court and that, in my view, is the only way to go.
Councillor Thompson.
I'll be supporting one and two, I can't support three. My reason is that I have seen nothing that would indicate to me other than that the intentions of the quarry owner are, and I understand this from a business perspective, to maximize the return that they can get out of this hill. There is not a single concession that I can see that they have made to community concern. And they have fought any attempt to limit. And the fact that they're going back now to have the interim enforcement order removed is a further reflection of the fact that they wish to have removed any impediment to the quarrying of this hill to the maximum extent possible. And I get that, from their perspective, it's their investment, that's what they want to do. So, but it's, but I think the community has made very clear that there are limits to what you can do to an environment and that the limits have been well and truly reached on this one. Now, I perfectly accept that if this goes back to court, there may well be a judge who will make a decision that I may not agree with. But I can't accept this incremental creep. And it seems to me that when you're dealing with somebody who, in my view, has been... And it seems to me that when you're dealing with somebody who in my view has been completely intransigent, then I see no point in handing them away any small negotiating stance that we might have, so that they can carry on while they continue to work to be able to mine the rest of it. And I think our community's been very clear that it doesn't want that to happen. Now, if an idiot judge at some point says they can do that, I can't do anything about that. But I can be very clear that I, as a councillor, don't wish to see that happen. I have some considerable admiration for the abilities of this company to, to masterfully manage their investment. But if this was a multinational mining company that was doing this work, frankly, the people would be tying themselves up in front of the bulldozers. So, it stops, it's got to stop. And we should be doing what we can to ensure that it stops. And I just don't want to give away any more negotiating stance. That's my position.
Counselor Benson Pope.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I'd like to.
Add a few elements to this. The first one is that it's always amazed me that there wasn't a similar public concern over a long period as another quarrying company completely obliterated Blackhead. That said, it's not surprising, given the papers that are in our documents, that the owner of the quarry thinks they have a right. The city on two occasions, over the name of Ms Spargo and Ms Walker, said that there were existing rights or consents of some kind in place. And then of course, we have the court saying no, and the court saying yes. And this has been an extraordinarily expensive exercise for the council. And I think the best thing we can do is stop meandering around the issue and focus on these recommendations past one and two, and let the court tell us what conditions it believes are in place, so that we know and we can all move on.
I wish I could share councillor Thompson's conviction that the community is very clear about what it wants. The community certainly is clear that it would like to keep the shape of Saddle Hill. What the community is not so clear on is how much they're prepared to pay to do that. And I don't think it's been clear at all on what this has cost so far, in terms of direct costs, in terms of legal costs, in terms of city council time. And even less clear is the indirect costs, when you consider that the aggregate coming out of this quarry is probably the most cost effective aggregate that we've had in the end for decades. It's been used substantially for not only Mamonah Airport, but State Highway 88 and a lot of other projects in between. And if we are to severely restrict the operation of the quarry, the future costs, cost increases in aggregate, given that we are looking at monopolies in other quarrying areas, could be running into the many, many millions of dollars. So, for me, although it's quite clear that we'd love to keep the shape of the hill, it's not clear how keeping the shape of the hill is going to impact on the future affordability of aggregate and what the other costs are involved in continuing to fight this through the courts. I don't share councillor Benson Pope's hope that we're going to get one final judgment from the court and everything's going to be settled and everyone's going to know where they stand. All I can see is this carrying on for a very, very long time. And I'm also concerned that there are a number of impossible scenarios that are being suggested as real, in terms of possibly rebuilding the hill afterwards. I don't think that it is economically possible, even if it were physically possible, to bring in a mountain load of soil from some other part of the country and rebuild this hill after it's been quarried. That kind of suggestion, I think, just helps cloud the issue and makes a, an issue which is already very.
What a, what a.
An, a non-issue that you've already ruled is not part of this debate again.
And I am, I'm on point. Counselor Anderson, the inference that could be taken from what you're saying, all being in good faith, is that somehow the writers of this report are responsible for that proposal? They are not.
I haven't, I haven't said that at all.
It's not germane to this. I said the inference that could be taken, not the implication you put into it. So please restrict yourself to, to what is germane to this decision, please.
It seems unfortunate to me, your worship, that when councillor Wilson brought up the issue of reconstituting the hill, nobody complained.
Can you please stick to what's germane to this, or I'll ask you to sit down?
My view is germane to this. I'd understood that you were wanting to restrict my questioning of staff on that particular issue, was just restricted to question time. But I'm not allowed to talk about it either.
Please sit down. You're defying my ruling. Are there any, councillor Wilson?
Just for clarity, mine was about the risk management of the hill as it is, and that's why I'm going to support one and two, and definitely couldn't support three. And actually, I have to say that I'm really disappointed that that advice even got to this table, considering the history of this matter. The issue for me is that we took a very clear decision, as the CEO reported, that it was unanimous to the extent that no one voted against it, to preserve the skyline. That's what we said was the bottom line here, that we were sure that that was the intent. Certainly on the quantum that had been taken and mined in the past and the existing rights, if there were no resource consent. I have, this is not a matter just of what it looks like on the skyline, but the risk of undermining that by, what may happen by nature on this area. And to that end, I think that we have to be really careful in not setting a limit that can be undermined by untoward events. And that's why I think that we need to have to take a very cautionary approach, especially since we obviously do not have any other information, geological or otherwise, telling us that, what the boundary should be. And so that's why I'm going to support number one and two. And I think unless we get that other information saying that they can keep the line, I've heard a number of people comment about the risk of the line going as it is and being undermined. And I'm less than confident that we will be able to deal with retention or rebuilding of the line under any enforcement conditions. I've been given no reason to have any confidence that could happen today in my questioning. And therefore, I think we need to take a very, very conservative approach and retain what we can of the existing line.
Counselor Hall.
I note the photo that we're looking at was taken in September '12, or '12. Thirty months ago, already I think there has been significant change within the wall of, in the, in the inside of the quarry. I think right in the middle of the photo, one to four nine, where you can see the blue crusher, I think already that's probably two to three metres lower now in that area. I can support options one and two. I think there's no way in the world I can support option three. I think by, if we supported option three, I think it would give them five to seven years, perhaps more quarrying. It's a reality in the city, we do need aggregate, we do need good roads, we do need bases for buildings and all sorts of things. But I don't perhaps share councillor Benson Pope's view about other hills. I think, I don't think all hills are equal. And I think we're foolish if we think they are. I don't know about Blackhead or how significant it ever was in the past. I know exactly where it is, but that's all I know. But, but the significance of Saddle Hill to the community is significant and it should be significant. And just because you might live in a part of the city where you can't see it, I don't think it's a hill we need to be tearing down or, people have talked about the cost. You know, I'm not much good at maths, but if we've spent in the vicinity of $180,000, we've got $50,000 rate payers, is that $4 each, right across the board? It's probably a bit more for a farmer, but I'd like to donate my normal extravagant way, a hundred times greater. But the reality of it is, it's not a cost. I think we need to look at this, we need to say, no, we need to draw a line in the sand. I don't think, if the court can make a decision, and it may take up to a year, I think they can survive for another year. And if they can't, we're going to lose anyway. If they go and try to get this appealed, if we give them even a partial, partial, I don't believe in, we want to give them anything. I think it's probably right that we, councillor Thompson, we've, we've not found these people the most easy to deal with. And so I can support one and two, but under no circumstances can I support option three. Which I know we're not asked to do in this motion right now.
Counselor Stansfield.
Along with other councillors, I am going to support these resolutions. I, I can't for the life of me accept anything other than the final decision that has to be made here by the court, is whether the hill can be completely removed or it can't. Because there has been an understanding of protecting the profile. And pretty much, with the exception of what's been identified by staff here in terms of the remaining 150,000 or 160,000 cubic metres that could come out to the line associated with the third resolution, means that the quarry has little life left if the ridge line is to be protected. So, I don't think there's anything, the question we're asking the court really is, is the ridge line to be protected or is the ridge line not to be protected? If the ridge line is not to be protected, then the hill will either be lost or rate payers will have to agree to buy it at what will be a particularly unpleasant amount of money. And that's been made pretty clear to us by the owners of the quarry. So I think we have to rely on the court here. If there is reasonable acceptance by the court that the ridge line should have been protected under what might have been the original consent, then we will get an outcome that our community can live with, even if it means the piece in red here then gets put in to the quarrying area, because that is the profile that keeps the ridge line. At least at that point, there would be protection on the ridge line. So, I'm, I'm supporting these two resolutions. I think the third one, while it might come as a condition on the consent from the court, if we give it up now, then the court will assume that we have accepted it disappearing. And if there is then some desire to meet halfway, I think the line could go further. So I think we are asking for a resolution on, is the profile to be protected or isn't it? And that's what we have to stick with.
Before I can go to the mover, I will be supporting these recommendations. There are two, and they refer to different things. I think for all the reasons outlined by a good number of speakers, but by councillor Stansfield, most recently, we need certainty around what the conditions are in terms of what the company quarrying the hill is allowed to do. And the only way to get that certainty is, if we can try and agree other way, the only way to get that certainty is to go back to the court. As far as the second recommendation is concerned, I support that because I think, as I alluded during question time, if we are prepared to acknowledge that that red hatched part of the hill was part of, it should be consented, then we're acknowledging that we accept certain conditions on the resource consent, which in another context, we're saying we have no knowledge of, we don't understand. And I think it would constrain any future possibility of agreement with the quarry owners, where we'd go down that road. And I guess the third thing is, in terms of needing this clarity and certainty now, goes to the points that councillor Anderson made around not knowing the costs. He mentioned that the community, for instance, doesn't know the price it would be prepared to pay. And I think that's a very valid point. And, and, but the fact is, we cannot weigh up the pros and cons of what this will cost us until we get certainty about the conditions of the resource consent and from that, we can determine the value of the hill. And at that point, we can say to the community, well, here's the choice. And it may be that it isn't worth it, we don't know. But until we have that certainty, until we can put a value on it, we can't tell what the costs to the community or to our infrastructure costs or whatever are. So we just need to go down that road. So I think those points are very valid. But we're not going to answer those questions until we have certainty from the court. That's why I think we've got to take it back there. Counselor Bezette, would you like to?
I really haven't got a, I don't wish to make a reply, but I just wanted to clarify resolution three, and I'm referring here to the process. And I guess it would be if I could ask the CEO's ruling on this issue. So there's no ambiguity or any doubt as to why we accept or reject item three. I'm asking, or resolution three, I'm asking that if we support two, then surely three becomes redundant. And if that is the case, why don't we leave three out of here?
To clarify, that is precisely what I meant when I said we'll put one and two. And if two passes, we don't go anywhere near three. Because it contradicts two. If two fails, we then, I'll invite you to move three if, if, or anybody wishes to. Okay, so I'm going to put it, this is recommendations one and two. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. That concludes that issue. We don't need, as I say, need to go to three. And I think that there being nothing else on the agenda. That is, I recall the meeting two opposed.